I'd like to welcome everyone to our October 8th, 2020 virtual meeting of the St. Cloud City Council. Tonight's council meeting, once again, is being conducted using communications media technology as authorized by executive order of the governor during the ongoing pandemic. We appreciate your patience and assure you that your city council remains committed providing the public a fair and reasonable opportunity to participate in council meetings. We sincerely appreciate your continued understanding as we work through this temporary manner of conducting meetings. To tonight's meeting participants, as the presiding officer, I request the following. I request that each council member or designated staff member request that they be recognized by me before speaking. I'll do my best to quickly recognize and call on you. All participants should use the mute function and only unmute yourself when you seek to be recognized to speak and while you are speaking. Please remember that this meeting is being broadcast to the public and therefore request that you eliminate any background distractions you may have at your location. Prior to the council taking final action on any agenda item, applicants or members of the public who are present in the public access area will be recognized to address the council. Applicants and members of the public who have pre-registered to address the specific agenda item through communications media technology will be recognized to address the council and email or written statements that have been timely submitted will be read into the record. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is getting the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. With that, I call this October 8th meeting to order. And if we could, I'll rise for a moment of silence and if we could remember one of our crossing guards who was injured today in an accident, tragic accident, pray for her recovery. After which, I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Adam Clark, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
I am here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny? Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Here.
This time, we have a presentation by St. Cloud Main Street regarding our historic district inventory. I believe, yes, sir.
May I be recognized?
Yes, you may.
Yes, sir, I request if we could have two previous discussions to that. First off, we have evoke on the line to talk about our branding, which is council item number two. And then a few minutes to talk about the Christmas parade.
Alright. We'll do that.
Yes, sir, so after hearing feedback from the citizenry and our downtown businesses, I convened a meeting yesterday with myself, Paula Stark from Main Street, Dirk Webb from the chamber, and Robert Bass, who's chair of the Christmas parade. We developed a safety plan that we think will be effective and we can still have the parade on October 5th. Unless there's any objections, we're going to move forward with that and the craft fair.
Mayor, did he mean October 5th?
No, December 5th. I didn't mean October, December 5th.
Wait, that's a curve ball.
Yeah, it is. So December 5th.
Do you have anything else to share with that?
No, sir, and then if we could recognize evoke to go through council action item two, please.
I'll do that in just a moment. Are there any questions regarding the Christmas parade?
I believe I saw Mr. Bass walk into the council chambers. I didn't know if he wanted to speak on behalf of that or if he was fine with the recommendation.
And I'm sure Ms. Redman is in the audience wanting to say something.
Mayor, back to the floor.
Ms. Jaworski, do we have any of those wishing?
Yes, I have three slips that have turned in and they have requested a speech regarding the parade.
Okay. I'll feel recognize them at this time.
Okay, first I have Angelina Redman.
Ms. Redman, will you please come and?
They've rearranged.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I think they've rearranged the.
Thanks, Lena Redman.
They're doing.
And I own Cobblestone Fort Yard in downtown St. Cloud. Well, I had this long drawn out speech asking you guys to, sorry, this mask, to reconsider what I heard of the Christmas parade being canceled. But now that I've heard otherwise, I just want to thank you. I know that the permit was never applied for. And I know that I have caused quite a stink on social media this week to get this taken care of, so I want to thank our council. And I especially want to thank Deputy Mayor Matheny because I reached out to her immediately after seeing the chambers posting. And I want to thank Robert Bass because without his help, he called me immediately and reached out and told me what was going on. And I know our city manager has worked tirelessly on this as well. And you guys have all been very instrumental in keeping downtown going through this whole pandemic. And so instead of giving my big drawn out speech, I just want to say thank you for making this happen because it is really important to not only the downtown businesses, but our community. Our kids deserve this. Our seniors that are going to be marching deserve this. Our town deserves this. And it's important that we give them back some sort of normality with everything else that's gone on. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Redman. We look forward to having the parade. We're all pleased. Ms. Jaworski, do you have a?
Yes, next I have Cadence Redman.
So I also have a speech, but since what I just heard, I wanted to thank you all so much and my mom, which she just said, like, everything musically, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, I have Robert Bass.
Mr. Bass?
Hello, council. I'm really just here for any questions. First of all, I want to thank the city manager for revisiting this along with mayor. We're all going to be, this is all due to all of us. We're going to make some modifications to the parade that are not, it's not going to look exactly like it has in years past, but we're trying to do what's best for the public and to ensure the public's safety. All I can ask is, we're on limited time now, so if there's anyone out there who would like some volunteer hours, please let us know because we're going to be, we're going to definitely be in need of that. But I'm here to answer your questions, any of the council matters.
Does anyone on the council have any questions you'd like to ask? Mr. Bass? Councilmember Trace?
Just please make sure to keep everyone safe.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, I'm sorry. Mr. Bass, I think that is pretty much the will of the council or the citizens' will. And that's what we should do is listen to them. And I think that's the right thing to do in the right direction we're going right now to do that, so appreciate it. Keep us safe. Thank you.
Councilmember Askew?
Mr. Bass, how long you've been doing this parade?
I had a lot of hair. It's probably twenty, twenty years or so, I don't know. It's twenty, twenty plus, something like that.
Okay, there's nobody out there that loves the parade more than you. I just wanted to let people know. You didn't stop trying to keep it going, so I appreciate all your help you do to the community, Mr. Bass.
Thank you, thank you. I really enjoy it.
And I just echo the same sentiments. You have been so faithful. Thank you for your tireless efforts. And we are certainly excited about trying to get back to some normalcy. And so I'm so glad that we're moving forward with the parade.
The only thing I can ask of all of us, we all have to be locked in arms with events like this because there's going to be concerns from the public and they're in their right, rightfully so. But what we're going to try to do is eliminate some of the congestion. We're not going to make the loop around City Hall. We're just going to straighten Pennsylvania out. That's going to be a little bit different. The parade will go a little bit faster. But we just need to be all united when we make this decision. And hopefully that the public will understand and we'll do everything in our power to ensure the safety of everyone.
Utility up.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, folks.
Don't run off. This could be a critical moment.
Okay, at this point, we will have a presentation regarding council action item number two from evac.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Good to see you all. So yeah, we're evoke advertising. You've seen us before here, but we're glad to be back. Last time we saw each other, we were discussing our brand pillars after our brand discovery meeting. But now we get to show you the fruits of those labors. So just as a reminder, the brand pillars we landed on were hometown pride, authentic in nature, and the centrality of St. Cloud. So we use those three pillars to build upon that and work with the team here in St. Cloud to come up with what you'll see here today with our logo and tagline options we'll be presenting with you. So we're very excited. We hope you are too. I know most of the city council members have already seen it. But this is exciting and we can't wait to show you. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Chris LeBlanc, Creative Director. He's going to go through the logos here. And Lauren, our Associate Creative Director, is going to go through the taglines and take it away. Chris, you're on mute.
There. Good evening, everybody. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. And as Ally had mentioned, we're very excited about this. We've been waiting very diligently all week to present this this evening, so we thank you for your time. Today, we'll just be going over the branding elements and logos and taglines and then kind of next steps. So for branding, right, all the pillars that we worked so hard on last time kind of boiled down to this point where the rubber meets the road, right? So we talked about the three pillars. Now we take those and start to put them into a visual brand toolbox. With that, you'll get your logo, your graphic elements, your color palette, your layout styles, your images, kind of everything that the, you know, the city of St. Cloud would need to start marketing. So with that, kind of walking you through our process of how we got to where we got to, you take those pillars, right, and it's like, how do you start connecting all the different pillars to our visual aspects, right? It's kind of like a hieroglyphics. It's an image that either connotates a word or a phrase. So we start looking and boiling it down and see what rises to the top. The first thing we look at is our color selection. So for colors, it's usually a thing that's mostly overlooked. There's a lot of psychology behind color. A lot of brands utilize that psychology and their marketing and their brand construction. So for us, when we looked at how do we build the St. Cloud brand, we kind of looked to St. Cloud itself, right? So this is going to be branding that sits in the community and sits in St. Cloud. So why not use St. Cloud as our inspiration to pull from the palette? So from that, we ended up here. Now, when we talk about these color selections, not all of these colors would be used in our logo executions, but we would build a robust complementary color list that we could use in conjunction with our branding, really to give you a little bit more variety when you start to market. Next, we kind of go into typography. I'm a little bit of a type nerd. My grandfather was a printer. I was handsaying type at like ten, so it's a passion of mine. But just a little bit about font selection. So for us, there's kind of four really font categories that people pull from. Your first is your serif fonts. That's with the little feet on top and on bottom. Those are more your traditional brands, your ones that are tend to be a little bit more long-winded, like not long setup like Gucci, more elegance. Your sans serif, so your more modern functional business fonts. It's like your Facebook, your Googles, your FedExes. Script fonts in the lower left corner, those are more relaxed, a little bit more decorative. Usually something that would be built with a lifestyle brand. You look at Facebook as opposed to Instagram or Disney. Display fonts down in the bottom right-hand corner, those are more your decorative font. So those are logos that are generally comprised of just a font itself, have a lot of personality. You can see a couple that I chose there. So looking at this and how it applies to you, I tried to figure out where I needed to be. And looking at St. Cloud, there is a certain air of relaxation. There's a comfortability. People are a little bit more laid back here. We noticed it from the business owners we spoke to or to the residents. There's a comfortability, you know, they like to be just far enough away and they feel like they're in their own private oasis. So I like the script aspect of that. And where we also think there needs to be a juxtaposition is there needs to be a function, right? Like a business aspect of that. So we like the idea of balancing a script font and a serif font together. Kind of has that relaxed and business tied together. So we really thought that was a good, strong way to go. And then kind of looking at our design process, every agency has their own unique one. For us, we start out with what's expected. And what that usually means is you have a brand and they do a refresh. It kind of looks like the same brand. There's a lot of the DNA of the original brand into it. It's just refreshed. Then we start to push that envelope a little bit further and go towards the unexpected. And that's a completely fresh approach. So a lot of brands would do that for just trying to change the whole entire chapter and go to a new story that they want to tell. But I think where we ended up in a much more comfortable place is kind of taking a little bit of the best of both worlds. So we start from about five logos that we narrow it down, then we kind of funnel it down till we feel like we've got the one that works. Goes three, then it usually goes one. So really, we're tasked with taking these three brand pillars and how do you get all this and distill it down to one particular approach? And we really found that a little bit unique because where St. Cloud is now isn't where it was 10 years before, and it's not going to be where St. Cloud is 10 years from now, right? So we feel like there's a good story that we need to tell. So rather than a solid position, we kind of took a mosaic approach. We think that there's a unique way to do this through a set of icons and iconography. And we say mosaic, that's usually the large image comprised of a bunch of smaller images, right? So we take this and how do we still this down? We build out a set of icons. And for us, with that serif or that relaxed font and the sans serif balanced together in these use of these icons, the first icon that we did represents water balance. There's a calmness to it. It kind of talks about the natural areas where there's a lot of lakes and people utilizing those, you know, activities. Authentic in nature, we like the idea of utilizing, you know, San Hill crane. That's, you know, a bird that's very at home in St. Cloud. And then we also, for the last icon, we use a star because that kind of also connotates centrality, but it also gives a really good nod to the military. And we like the way that ties in and then of course, balanced with that relaxed font, you wind up with this. So this is our execution and our recommended logo that we are moving forward with. And when I say mosaic approach, I'm going to go back to that and kind of tease it out a little bit further. These three icons will play a pivotal part in our new branding. And with that, I've kind of built it out a little bit more. So this is kind of the execution to the logo. And then going into that mosaic approach, I'm recommending building a unique set of icons that would kind of work with all the amenities and features and practices and departments of St. Cloud. So we'd have outdoor activity icons that could work for wayfinding signage, a set of arts and culture activity icons with our festivals. Also recommended for business development, we could create some unique toolkits for, you know, different departments to use as well as the military and historic. So just showing you like visually how this plays out, right? I'm a visual person, so sometimes it makes more sense when I see it. When you see the brand start to be applied throughout the community, you can see it really starts to take a life on its own. So from billboards to, you know, signage, to wayfinding signage, to bus straps, to city vehicles and, you know, uniforms, you start to see there's a lot of flexibility here. So we're really excited on how that turned out. And then when you take a look at where we started and where we're at, there's still a sense of relaxation and professionalism that we had in the first logo. But I think carried out, it looks like something that has been around for a while, but has evolved. And then I always like to do this where you take a look at, you know, some competitive sets and people who throughout the state of Florida. It's one of, you know, we have the most destinations and we're a very large state, right? So there's a lot of branding going on. It really stands out. I mean, we're not inventing something new. You know, script fonts balanced with sans serif is something that's been around for a long, long time. But our usage, I think, is very unique. And when you look at the way that it's been executed, you can really see it starts to be a little bit more sharper. Okay, now we take this, right, we've got to go into brand positioning. What are we going to say? We've got this brand. How are we going to talk about it? What's the tagline? We really kind of stepped back and looked at our taglines and said, okay, maybe this mosaic approach is a really good activity to do for the tagline as well. I think there's some connectivity. And I go to this quote, which I think really connects it. A great brand is a story that is never completely told, right? And I think St. Cloud's at a particular point where its story is not completely written, right? We're really poised. You have a lot of active people who are very passionate about the community. It's poised for growth. So we thought taking that approach to the tagline would work very well. So I'm going to turn it over to Lauren. She's going to kind of walk you through the process as it goes for taglines.
Right, so like the design process that Chris went over, there are a couple exercises that we also like to do as we develop our messaging. So there's not as many pretty pictures and nice colors to look at on these slides, but it's still, it's still exciting. It's just a lot of words. So for me, being a copywriter, it's kind of like a big puzzle that we get to figure out and it's very exciting for us. So one of the first steps that we take is to create a list of any words or phrases that align with all those established brand pillars that we've talked about so far today. So with this list in front of us, we can make sure that the different taglines that we're working through are using those words that we already know are going to resonate with the brand and with the residents. So going through a couple different versions of taglines and kind of workshopping them internally as well as with the St. Cloud team, we actually ended up going with a little bit more of an unexpected approach to be able to convey everything we wanted to say. And that actually included creating a word specifically for the use of branding and positioning St. Cloud. And that word was centerplace. So even though we basically made this word up, it's still fairly recognizable and it's easy to understand what it means right away. With it, we're highlighting the city's central location, of course, but also calling in that mention of a place that you can, you know, call home, grow your business, you know, be part of the community, all the things that the residents and business owners talked about and mentioned when we had the chance to talk to them a little bit earlier in this process. But even beyond that, that word centerplace really lets us uniquely position St. Cloud because we can trademark its use and really own it as part of that St. Cloud brand. And from there, we expanded that thought to what would become the city tagline, which would be your centerplace for life. So this tagline is more broad in that it covers, you know, pretty much just about anything that happens within St. Cloud with that mention of life. But this is also where we can apply that mosaic branding approach that Chris talked about earlier. We can have different variations of the tagline available depending on who is using it, which department is using it, how it's being used. So it could be anything from your centerplace for business, your centerplace for history, you know, any of these things that could be called upon with whatever messaging we want to use at that time. That means we can tailor our message and reach every part of that audience. Not only where we are today, but this kind of allows us, this is kind of where it comes full circle with everything that Chris has mentioned so far. It allows us to keep telling that story as St. Cloud continues to grow over the years to come.
Yeah, and with that kind of dovetailing off of what Lauren said, these will be the executions and how they'll work both without the tagline and with the tagline. Because we don't want anybody to mistake St. Cloud for not St. Cloud, Florida, right? So we want to make sure that's always in there. Now, you'll notice on the tagline, it's italicized. That'll kind of let us know where that connectivity goes. The way we construct the logo is extremely flexible. And I think now more than ever, you're seeing a lot of destinations, a lot of cities really take the approach of retail when marketing the area. And as we look to all the different departments within St. Cloud or partners that'll be working with us, this allows us a multitude of flexibility as far as, like Lauren said, tailoring the message to specific audiences or empowering your partners and departments to really utilize the branding in a much cleaner way. And then cohesively, you see it starts to work together. So I thank you very much for your time. I tried to, what is it, be brief, be brilliant and be gone? So we want to make sure you guys have enough time to talk to us. But thank you so much for opportunity. Love to hear any feedback that we need to go over or any questions.
We certainly thank you for your presentation. And would anyone on the council have any comments or questions you'd like to ask? I'm not hearing.
I have some, but I was trying not to be first.
Why not? Set the stage.
Councilwoman Matheny?
I have a question. I know y'all are shocked. Um, so I, like the rest of the council, I'm sure I saw this for the first time this week. And so I told the team like I needed to think about it a little bit and sit with it. And I have some comments and, you know, I'm not the expert on branding, so I'm throwing them out to the team. I'm not sure about having a made up word in our logo. I, you know, I took this logo and showed it to a bunch of people and everybody is like, what? What's centerplace? What? Is that a real word? Like, that was the first response from everyone. So I'm not sure about having that made up word in there. The other issue I brought up in my agenda review was the star. I know that when we had our first conversation, we talked about including military, you know, soldier city. And I think this is a stylized nod towards that, but I don't think anybody will know what it is. So one of my suggestions when we had, when I saw this this week, you know, was maybe changing the star to the army green. Because when you look at the one sheet in this presentation that shows kind of how it'll be implemented or potentially could be implemented, you know, military and history was like an army green. And so they did, the team did say they did think about that when they were going through this. But then you have the crane, so maybe the crane could be gray. And then, you know, I just feel like no one is going to get like the star without having to explain it. Another issue that I brought up was, you know, before, and I don't know what the goal is today. Like, are we just giving comments or not really sure? But I, you know, certainly would want to have our chamber look at this logo, have Main Street look at it, the economic development folks. I know, you know, we're not going to get 100% decision one way or the other. But, you know, changing the branding of the city is an expensive endeavor to change it on letterheads and shirts and vehicles and business cards and every other thing. You know, I really liked that when they have the slides in here, when they really kind of rolled out, like how it could look on the water tower, how it could look, you know, on the side of trucks and things like that. And like, you really can start to see how it would be implemented. And then I kind of asked this question too when I saw the logo. Like, does somebody else in this area have a scripted logo? And so when I got off the thing, I was like, I know I've seen this and I feel like it was Kissimmee. And so I don't know if the clerk can pull up. I pulled up the Experience Kissimmee logo and I don't know if this is the old logo or the new logo or Experience Kissimmee.
That's on my screen is the actual current logo.
Where is it?
Their new brand.
So that's the current one? Okay, so Linda, could you pull up the older one?
Hi, this is Kathy. Can he unshare his screen so I can share mine?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
There we go. Okay, I can see it.
Yeah, that was just like, I saw this logo, even the colors, that I was like, I feel like I've seen something similar to this. So that was just kind of what popped into my mind when I saw it. And I did Google search, you know, like other cities and logos. I was trying to look at all the ones in. I was trying to look at all the ones in, in Florida and I didn't see anything else. But I knew I had kind of seen this with the same kind of script and color palette. So those were just kind of my thoughts. And I don't know if the council agrees with any of those or not. I just think some of the things are, like the star, for example, I just don't think anybody's going to get the star means military, like without a little more ties to it. And then really, really the big thing is like the center place. I'm just not sure, you know.
Well, I can address each of those points. I know you had asked, you gave a lot of critiques, so I can kind of work through those. And they're very, a great input and I really value that. Kind of a couple of things, right? I'm sure when cotton swabs were going to be rebranded as Q-tips and then Q-tips outdid cotton swabs, it was a little nervous for them, right? So it's very weird when you're going into uncharted territory and you're, you're either making up a word or in advertising, we run into that all the time just because, right? Everything's a remix and there's been a variation of something. And everybody who's experienced this at one point in time, you have an original idea and then you search it and then three other people have thought of it. It, it's very much uncharted waters, right? And the good side of that, of course, one is the trademarkability of it. Two, you get what it is and it's not a word that's nonsensical. It's actually two words put together. The opportunity for that is really being able to carve that channel and making that become a word that's common. You do that through your marketing and through advertising and pushing that out and then it becomes a thing, right? So there's two sides of that. As far as the experience Kissimmee logo, I don't really see the connectivity of it. I mean, there's a script front. Yes, it's, you know, for me, I'm, I'm an artist, right? So I can see the distinct difference of it. But amongst the comparative set of what's being marketed throughout the state of Florida, there's really nothing that, that's too much to it. Now going to the, the star and what that represents. You know, we had a very strong balancing act between having these three brand pillars, some of which have multitudes of things. And I really have to go back to how thankful I am for somebody on, on the council who recommended we watch a TED Talk on flag design for cities. Because that was kind of my guiding light through this whole thing. And one logo is not going to say everything and it's not going to say everything in a way that everybody would like it to. That's why within the mosaic approach, I really felt that we could address that issue on the unique set of icons we would develop, not only for museums and history, but for military in general. So they would have their own branding toolkit that they could work with this. If they wanted to utilize the branding for their own efforts with it, they can really work with the toolkit that we gave them to kind of pull that together. We really wanted to convey a warmth in it and putting it into the, the, the main logo that we had. We just felt that it detracted it and it was too C and say, having it be the star and green only spoke to military, then we lost the centrality and that kind of five star elegance to it. So that was the thought process and the juxtaposition. I do understand your concerns and I do think we can address it. As far as everything else, I, I would suggest when we do enculturation and workshop this out with your partners and people in the community, it's up to us to a really robust brand guide to show everybody the flexibility of how this logo will work and how the branding will benefit them.
Yes, and the brand guide is the next parts of the project. You know, it's building that stationary package for you guys and also that brand guide to cement those pieces and parts of this brand into something that we can then deliver to partners and stakeholders in the community. And so I would request that we can do that piece in part first before we start shopping this out. Mostly to make sure that we have an agreed upon way forward so that we are all together in motion, moving forward and getting out the same message out to each different stakeholder as we go through. So I, I understand wanting to get the community's input on this. I, I totally get that. I think though, that we should see through the entire part of this project before we do that.
Because those are, I'm, I'm just one council member, so I'm hoping some others chime in with similar feelings.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. I think I reiterate the same thing. I had a problem with the star. I had to ask the question, what it was for to start with, and I understand. But I'd like to see something that's military that'll look like military instead of a star, if we're going to do that. And I was contemplating the colors. The coloration was pretty much saturated and it wasn't bright enough that you put it on, on your vehicles or on your shirts or a thing like, it's like drab. It's like it's 20 year old ago. It's not new. You know, I look at Kissimmee, what you just saw, I looked at it, it looks a lot fresh, new. That's my comment.
I would love to address that if you'd like me to, as far as the colors. And, and I think it's one of those things when you see the, the Pantone selections, every monitor, when we're doing something digital, it's like a nightmare for a designer, right? Because each monitor is calibrated slightly different. I think it's a little bit harder to gauge how it looks unless you see the colors actually in hand. So we're more than happy to share those swatches and get those so you could see what the colors look like in person. If it's a matter of color adjustments, I mean, if we're okay with, with the design, I do strongly feel that the star represents both. I know we need to really speak to the military and it's such an important part of the DNA of Saint Cloud. And I think there's a way we can do that. But again, branding is always a weird one, right? Because it's subjective and each person has a different viewpoint to it. We tried to look at also color schemes in the comparative set and try to find something that would work a little bit more effectively. So that's kind of where we ended up with that, but absolutely. Thank you for your feedback.
Thank you. I had, well, I had asked the question to get some feedback before the meeting this, tonight. And the colorations was what I'd ask you and the star and things like that. So I, I'm in the same place that you are in, LaLa. I think those two things, I think we need to make some changes. That's my thought. Thank you.
Councilmember Trace.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you Evo team. I think the, the logo mark and overall the mosaic design, I really like that, that approach to the, the logo. Kind of what I said during the briefing was the tagline, you know, any tagline just takes time to grow on me. So I just, you know, still have to do that or maybe if there's other avenues you guys are going to look, look at for the tagline. And then just another question about how does this logo and mark, you know, integrate with some of the other logos and marks that are around the city? So this would potentially replace the one that's kind of in the background of everyone's screen, but utilities has their own logo, parks and recreation, police, fire. How, how would we integrate this into some of those other marks?
Would you like to respond to that, Christopher?
Uh, yeah, we can. The original branding assignment wasn't to tackle those other elements, but we can, we get into the, the brand guide and build that out and work with the individual team members to figure that particular aspect out. This initial blush of the job was just specifically to work on the city branding. But with the mosaic and the other elements we have for toolbox, we can definitely work with the individual departments to, to integrate that in successfully. I don't, I don't see a, a big problem at all at that.
Thank you.
Councilmember rescue.
Thank you, Mayor. Christopher, I, I, I told you before, I think I, I like it. I was a little shocked, I think, at first, but I took, while I was talking to you guys in my briefing, I took a picture of the screen and was showing people it. And, you know, I didn't say anything and just said, hey, this is something we're looking at. What do you think? And I really got nothing negative. I didn't get any feedback about stars or anything like that, but I know, bringing it up, yeah, I don't, I don't know if the star would, people would understand that. But again, Chicago's got five stars. What does that mean? You know, so it's just, and thanks for watching that video. Isn't that incredible?
It was very good, yeah. It made me laugh a lot.
Yeah.
It was good.
I liked it, um, you showed the rendering on the buses and stuff because I, when I was talking, I, I was really concerned about T-shirts and staff shirts and buses. And, and the same thing, Mr. Cooper and Linnair were talking about. When you start looking at other aspects of the city, they do have some of their own logos. And I would like to kind of combine, well, I don't know if we're going to combine it at all, but I think you're on the right track. You know, cleaning it up. I, I really wish we can get down to three words instead of four at the, for the tag logo line, but it's, I, I like it. Good start.
Well, I'd like to jump in. I certainly can see where you guys have put in a lot of thought and creativity into this logo and tagline. You know, it's such a radical departure from what we currently have that it, I think it takes a little thinking to, to get used to. I certainly liked the relaxed font that you used for Saint Cloud. I, I like the mosaic. I'm just not sure that I totally like all of the emblems that are inside the mosaic. I love the versatility of what you can do to interchange and promote the city. Like the other people, the tagline, that, that's something that I think I'm going to have to spend a little time thinking about. I, I like the versatility of being able to change the end of it when it comes to promoting things. And so, uh, I like where we're headed with it. I just think we just need to do a little more tweaking at this point. And I'm not sure exactly what the tweaking is at this point.
Mr. Bywell, may I add one thing?
Yes, you may.
Um, one of the benefits too of, you think of the amount of URLs that are currently out there and the ownability and having our own word opens up an amazing amount of opportunities for us to own URLs. Whether that's, you know, your center place for business and that's, you know, ownable URL. There's a bunch of different variations that come into play specifically since the markets are so saturated. And particularly when you look at, at destination marketing, the variations, I could pull up a list, I have, I think probably 2,200 city in town slogans. If it was a drinking game, you'd be drunk after the third one. It's, it's interesting how you do that specifically if, you know, thank God you're a beach destination because you could just swap the words around and there's a new destination. So I, I do think there's a, a chance to carve out a unique niche. And I do understand this is a, a very huge endeavor and this is a lot. And you guys are, are putting it out there and I work hand in hand with the team who's been fabulous as far as input. I still think, uh, one of my designing soulmates is, is Andre Anderson, who's just an incredible person. You guys are so lucky to have him. He's just a great person to work with. But I think when we took that approach, really when we look at flexibility and what the area needs, i- if it's a matter of boosting a color or two here, if it's changing one icon out, the icons that we showed in our mosaic were just the, you know, a sampling of what it is. We weren't really, you know, put in charge to do that, but that's something we just want to show you what we could do. So we're hoping that when we get to that next phase, we really can help each of your departments build a lot of robust materials and really tailor the messaging to get the effectiveness you guys need and what you hired us for. It's uncomfortable, I know it is, but I, I think we're really in a good place.
Well, that's one of the things I think that has grown on me since, you know, I first saw the presentation is there's so much versatility with the tagline as well as the mosaic that I, to me, that's a big plus. And so, but I'm still, it's a radical change.
That's for sure. And we, I talked to, you know, the team that, you know, prior to this. Enculturation is such a huge part in branding, right? It's not just the logo. Once it's designed, you got to do it inward and get everybody marching in step. And that's one of the things we like to work with you guys on too is, you know, once it's done, then what? You know, we'll really work with your team on how to implement this from not only all the internal teams, but the next steps for pushing it outwards. There's, you know, I think if everything fires in line, you can really see the brand start to take steam and start to unify a lot of the different areas we know and pain points that we needed to address that we did in, you know, our workshops.
Well, is there any other input that any of the council members have? Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. Now you guys all have something to say. I was waiting for somebody to jump in there first. I, I wanted to circle back, like I don't want your takeaway for me to be like that I don't like the logo. I just, you know, maybe just some tweaks, you know? I don't want you to feel like, and it's so much to be the person who's nitpicking the, you know, details versus someone who had to create it, you know? Like if you said, fine, design what you want, I'd be like, I don't know. So I wanted to kind of circle back to something Councilmember Cooper said. I don't mind the colors. I like the color palette myself. I know, I'm sure somebody's kind of keeping track of comments, but I don't mind the color palettes. And, and to kind of follow up with something Councilmember Trace said, it seems unusual to me to have departments having their own logo. Is that unusual? I would think this is the logo for the city and every single department is going to be using this because that like builds your brand power, like, I, I don't know, I just kind of wanted to.
And ideally, that's, that's what we'd want to do. Part of that enculturation thing that Chris was talking about, making sure that everyone fits in lockstep so that Saint Cloud really does become, and that's where the mosaic branding comes in for not only the logo, but also the tagline so that we can fit it in with those different departments.
I like, I like it when you show it on, you know, the way it can be incorporated into the city. It's just those couple of concerns that I had.
And Councilman Cooper, I did add a embroidered shirt. I don't know if you caught it in my presentation. As promised.
Yes, I did. Thank you. I'm not, I'm not objecting to the color, just a little brighter.
I understand, sir.
Are we done? Well, we certainly appreciate all the work you've done and we look forward to continuing to move forward with this. And thank you for your presentation. And Mr. Sturgeon, Councilman, I mean.
Yes, sir. Now, don't promote me or demote me. Mayor, I, I need some direction because Evo is going to go back and make those tweaks. And I'd like to bring it back to the next meeting and see if we can get it adopted. And we'll get it with some of the stakeholders too. Like I said, they were engaged in the initial design phases. I'd like a chance to, to run this around to some of our stakeholders and then get this back and get, get a final decision on the 22nd.
So what are you wanting from us, Mr. Sturgeon?
I, I mean, we heard, you want us to move forward with those tweaks collectively? I think they've got the notes. I think we understand what we want.
I don't think we're opposed to what we see. We just would like a little more time to absorb it and to try and incorporate some of the tweaks that we talked about, which I don't think are that significant.
No, not at all.
Unless I'm hearing something different from somebody else on the council.
So it's my understanding that we're going to go back and do these tweaks and we'll bring it back for a final decision on the 22nd. Evo team, is that, is that doable?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chris.
Councilmember Trace.
And i- if we're looking to have other departments integrated into this, would it be worthwhile to spend some time putting together some other mosaic tiles for police, fire, parks, rec, water sewer?
Um, I'd be happy to answer just a couple of things with that. My only caution is I would say let's get the, the logo stuff nailed down 100% and then we get into the brand guide. That's where I think is our prime opportunity, Councilman Trace, that I think I can start to work and build that through. I always say it's very dangerous when you're at a point, it's like getting condo furniture approved. You know, it's next to impossible. There's always somebody that hates your umbrella, right? So I think at that point, we'll go in and I'll do the micro tweaks that we talked about. If we're all feeling good about that and it goes into the next stage, we start to, to, you know, approve it and get it into usage, that's where I think I can address every one of those individual needs and we can set up power meetings. I'll make myself available for that with the, with the team to work through it.
And just so I, I make sure that I heard everybody's feedback. So color tweaking and maybe the star as well, right? And then anything with the tagline there or do we just need to marinate on that for a little bit?
Center place.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. I mean, should we take them one by one and see if you have three or more saying yes? Because I, I don't think probably all of the comments, everybody's agreeing with.
Councilmember Cooper.
Center place was the only thing that I'd, I'd have to sit there and play, think about it a whole lot more.
Some time on the tagline. But as far as the logo itself, maybe just to touch color tweaking and then maybe a, a play with the star just to give maybe an option there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I have thumbs up for the rest of you guys on that. Okay, move forward with it.
Cool.
All right, guys.
Thank you, Christopher. And thank you, Allison, and I see Bradley down there. Thank you so much, Brad.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Sturgeon, do you need anything else from us on that?
No, sir. Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. We appreciate it so much.
Thank you for that.
At this time, we'll go back to our St. Cloud Main Street presentation regarding the historic district. It's Paula Stark here. There she is.
Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
I can hear you. You have the floor.
Good evening, Council and Mr. Mayor. I wanted to just give you, I'm sorry?
I think somebody didn't have the mic on.
Okay, ready? I wanted to just give you a brief timeline update because I know sometimes the Historic Preservation Initiative that we have been dealing with for several years, it takes a little bit of time and sometimes we forget where we began and where we're going. So I wanted to just remind everybody that several years ago, we had the subcommittee put together to address historic preservation, to help put an ordinance in place and we worked with staff to do that. We worked with staff to district. And then we also, at the time, our historic district and ordinance was approved by you all in 2016, I believe. Then we established the Historic Preservation Board. Those particular items were critical in being able to apply for the certified local government designation, which you all know, as of last summer, we were approved and we are a CLG city. Along with those items, your Main Street program has continued to move your marker programs, your historic marker programs forward, the national register items forward. And we are currently working on the district to become a national registered entity. So part of all of that process was also being able to do this particular survey of our historic district. And that's all predicated on being able to identify all of those things that are important and significant in that district. And with that, we, we applied for a historic preservation grant, a matching grant through the state. We received that. And with that, we also were able to acquire a consultant to put all of that together and update our historic inventory. So what you're going to see tonight is a presentation on the outcome of that. It was a blend of our previous survey that was done in 1993. So obviously, some things have changed since then. And this particular report is the catalyst for us to be able to apply for the district to be on the national register. I can tell you that the state is ready and waiting to help us do that application. We also have applied, you will see it in our recommendations this evening. However, we did apply, when I say that, your Main Street program, applied for another grant that we would be able to start utilizing next summer if we get the funding through the state. We did go through the process. We are ranked in getting a grant. It's all about the funding now through the state. So if that happens, then we will be hiring someone to help us apply and make application for the district to be on the national registry. So this, what you're seeing this evening is the step before that can happen. And it gives us recommendations from a historic preservationist. And I'm really happy to be able to tell you that Ms. Laura Lee Corbett, who is her consulting firm that ultimately we hired to do this report, is very familiar with our community. Many years ago, she was the state coordinator for the state Main Street programs. And so in the very beginning, she was in our community that time. She has been here several different times and engaged in the community. So she's very familiar with our past and where we want to go with the future. So with that, I will introduce her to do the presentation and we will both be available for questions after the presentation if you have any.
Thank you very much. Are you ready?
Can't see myself.
I think your mic is working, but your video isn't.
Just a minute. Sorry about that. I did initially sign in as a video. I don't see that it's giving me that option.
Okay.
Hello, this is Kathy. You are in as a panelist. Do you have a share screen option at the bottom of your Zoom window?
No, ma'am, I don't. I can't see myself and I don't see a share screen.
Well, you may have to share without the video unless Paula has it.
Stack has it.
Am I a presenter? Can I? Kathy, I promoted her again to panelist. She should be reconnecting.
There we go. Can you see the screen, Ms. Corbett?
I can. Can y'all see the presentation?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that hiccup. Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to listen to the update on the survey. Paula just introduced me. I'm Laura Lee Corbett. I actually was the state Main Street coordinator when you were first designated as a Main Street program. So I was actually able to participate in the resource team we did back in 2000. I was the lead. Christine Dalton, formerly with the City of Sanford, assisted me. She lives in Orlando and she assisted with the field work and taking most of the pictures and interviewing local people. Of course, Paula deeply involved in Tabitha as the grantees. And I just wanted to do a shout out to the property appraiser for helping us with, you know, the myriad of information that we had to deal with, with parcel numbers and addresses and sorting all that out to document the properties. Paula told you about the $50,000 grant that was received from the Florida Division of Historical Resources. This was an update to the 93 survey. So something that we did was to expand the period of significance. So we were picking up a lot of properties from the mid 1940s up to 1970 in this survey update. There are already three buildings on the National Register of Historic Places in St. Cloud, and I'm sure you're familiar with each of them. The G A R Hall was nominated 20 plus years ago and more recently, the St. Cloud Depot. And actually, while we were just finishing up the survey, kudos on the Veterans Memorial Library Women's Club of St. Cloud Auditorium being placed on the National Register. That's very exciting. So we accessed and updated the previously recorded historic resources and then added the ones, as I said, once we expanded the period of significance. And one thing that we did was to record the state of integrity and the condition of the buildings and any new historical data that we may have found in our research and interviews. So our research methods, so COVID, of course, threw a bit of a curve ball at us with not being able access many of the local repositories. However, I was able to pull a lot off Florida photographic collection from newspapers that were available online. And I was able to access the State Archives of Florida here in Tallahassee before they shut down. And unfortunately, they are still closed. I also used Pokes directories and Chamber of Commerce maps as well as Sandborne maps, which some of you may be familiar with. And there's one illustrated here, which are the old fire insurance maps. The 93 survey, you know, it's 27 years old. It covered a much larger area than what we did downtown and on some of the periphery streets. So this is just kind of a small section of that original survey. So this no means was a way to try to update everything in the city limits, although there are areas of value outside of where we surveyed. So this is the survey area and it mimics what the Main Street area is and the Historic Preservation District, which also is essentially the same as the CRA map here. So integrity, we talk about integrity. That's dictated, if you will, by the National Park Service. And they have what we call seven aspects of integrity, which are listed here of the ones that are listed. We mainly used design, materials and workmanship as kind of the key factors in our determination of eligibility. And so buildings fell into two categories in the series of this, in the process, I should say, of this survey, being potentially contributing to a national register district or a local district or non-contributing. So what would factor into these determinations? So a non-contributing structure would be something like this, this home that lacks integrity because the materials have changed, the fenestration has changed, it has some additions, it's pretty radically altered its original design. So that is an example of one that we would consider to be non-contributing. Another example of non-contributing, and this is an update, a sample update from the 93 survey, is this sweet little 1925 pyramidal style home, frame vernacular home. And it is currently a part of a auto business. And so zoning changes, design changes, all that factors into this update. This is an example of a building that's changed a little bit since 93. This is a lovely craftsman home. You can still tell that it's the same home, although it did have some minor things that were changed in the years after 93, which include the vinyl siding, the enclosed rafter tails, items like that. And this was fairly common changes that we saw in some of these buildings as we updated the old recordation. So these are things that the Historic Preservation Board will want to be aware of when people are getting permits to alter their structures. Another way that we determine integrity is to use historic photos. I'm sure everyone's familiar with the beautiful Chamber of Commerce, a former bank building. And I know this was a recipient of funds from the Florida Department of State years ago. It obviously has all, ticks all the boxes of the seven aspects of integrity that we use. The Veterans Memorial Building, this is a fun one. It's the only international style building that we found in our, course of our survey. It's representative of an interesting point in time. And this was in 1970 where Fashion Inc., this company that would alter facades. And this was because St. Cloud was bracing, if you will, for the opening of Walt Disney World. And so a lot of downtown merchants and civic leaders were concerned on the appearance of downtown. And so this is exactly where we can pinpoint a point of time where this building was altered and now it's 50 years since that alteration. But you can still tell it's the same building. The former First Baptist Church is an interesting example of an alteration that has taken on historical significance as well. You know, you have this Gothic building initially that was altered in 1925 to reflect more Mediterranean style. And this was really during the Florida Lamboon craze and St. Cloud's particular affinity for what's called Span of Florida, which I'm sure you're familiar with that term, of this kind of Mediterranean revamp on the buildings in St. Cloud in the 1920s. And at this point in time, it's taken on historical significance. So we evaluated 247 properties. We found the vast majority, 184 were identified as contributing, only 63 as non-contributing. And then we called out 19 individual properties that would be individually eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. So what are the criteria for listing? So there, there are four. And they go by, we already talked about integrity, but the first criterion is A, and that's related to a particular event. B is affiliated with a particular person. That being said, usually the building has to be affiliated with that person during their years of what we would call productivity. And C, and this relates to most districts, is essentially architecture. And that's a broad category for most districts. D really relates to archaeology and that did not pertain to this particular survey. So we had two historical contexts that we're dealing with. The 93 survey had 70 pages of historical context. And we really didn't feel that we needed to, you know, reinvent the wheel there or gild the lily. We did a few paragraphs and included some new photographs. But I think most of you know the history of the soldier cities you were just discussing in your previous presentation. One thing that the Department of State did say was lacking in the 93 survey was the presence of African Americans. So we did a little bit of research and found, working with the property appraiser, a 1910 plat that was called the Colored Quarter. And you can see that on the left here. And it was essentially about a mile from where our current survey district is. So it was not connected at all. It was not contiguous. So we did not cover it. But you will see that most of it has been changed so dramatically. A lot of the lots have been combined. Homes that are there are from the 70s and 80s and really don't relate to this particular area. But we did note that in the report. What we mainly did was an update to the historic context from 1940 to 1970. So we got more into, more veterans were retiring. Central Florida, you've got air conditioning that comes into factor. More people are moving to Florida, especially again, veterans after World War II. It was very enticing to move to Florida. And then later in the historic context, we talked about the opening of Walt Disney World and its impact in St. Cloud, as well as a lot of transportation adjustments that were made, like the widening of 13th Street, which took out some resources. So new buildings that we documented that would not have been in the previous survey are these mid-century buildings. We have, this was the third post office. We documented three. This was the third. This was the first first-class post office that St. Cloud got. And now functions as a bar and restaurant. And then the fun Brooks Apartments. It's a fun mid-century modern apartment building. And that's another one that we picked up on. And it has a strong sense of integrity and it has its original use. We also picked up a lot of the residential area that's peripheral to downtown. And we picked up buildings that are now, you know, ranch style and minimal traditional that would not have been previously recorded. And we also noted demolished structures. And this may be hard to see, but if you see all the little green dots on the map, you'll see where the demolitions have occurred since the 93 survey. Identified demolitions, the former St. Cloud Ice Plant is no longer there. And this is a smattering of some buildings that are no longer there. And as we mapped them out, I found that a lot of the residential buildings that have been taken out are, were, tended to be corner lots. So the resources interview overview, these were, like I said, residents on the more residential streets, commercial, industrial, vernacular, architecture, religious and club buildings. And our period from, from the whole period of time for the historic context is 1909 through 1970. And that would put us at the 50-year benchmark, which is generally the age of antiquity that's considered for listing on the National Register. The residential designs, I'm not going to show an example. There are so many. There are wonderful variety of residential designs that are seen in St. Cloud. Just, just to pick one, this is what I believe is probably a kit home. And there are a number of kit homes in St. Cloud. You have a real treasure, if you will. You've got such a great collection of them. And I hope that you keep identifying them and finding the original plans to some of these buildings. I think that would help the Historic Preservation Review. I think that would help the Historic Preservation Review Board make better decisions and homeowners make better decisions and kind of best practices of how to maintain these homes. This is the list of individually eligible resources that we identified. Again, there are nineteen of them. And then we identified them on a map that's in the appendices. And I, I'm not going to list all nineteen, but just a sample on the, the first Saint Cloud Post Office. And these are the criterion that it's eligible on. Obviously, it's had some changes, but you can tell it's still the same building. The municipal electric plant, it's actually part of the only resource group that I recorded, which are structures that are historic in nature and they're all related to a similar function or use. And these are the various criterion that it would be eligible under, obviously, community planning and development. And it's, it's an interesting industrial vernacular building. And then the associations with Ryan and Roberts, the first architectural, female architectural firm established in Orlando. And they have several examples, or you have several examples of their work in Saint Cloud. And this is the People's Bank and it has relayed retained much of the integrity since its original kind of span of Florida remodel that they did. This is a map of what we consider contributing, potentially contributing buildings and non-contributing buildings within the survey boundaries. And we have a number of recommendations. I just called out a few for the purposes of this presentation. Obviously, as Paula mentioned, you should consider creating a National Register District within the boundaries of the survey. As she said, the staff at the Florida Department of State is very eager to do this. You have a fresh survey and the fresher the survey, if you will, the better for getting a nomination done. The more time that lapses, then you get into issues of it being too dated. They really like to see the condition and the integrity of a, of a proposed district from what they say the moment that the district is nominated. So I can tell you best, best to do it now. I did one survey last year and a hurricane hit it and I had to go back and reevaluate a number of structures mid-nomination. So it's, it's best to, time is of the essence. Review this list made me prioritize and our, especially our list of individually eligible structures. What made me the community, made me the Historic Preservation Board, made me have a workshop to prioritize what buildings could be individually nominated next. Also work with property owners. I know that you have this wonderful Ad Valorem tax exemption as one of your ordinances. And the best way to, you know, get word out to property owners. So again, have workshops, maybe pamphlets. And this is a tool that property owners can use to best preserve their buildings. And also you're a new CLG and this is a wonderful thing. I'm, I'm so happy because I came and gave a presentation, I believe, six years ago. And we talked about how to become a CLG and now you're a CLJ, so that's great. And I know COVID has kind of thrown a wrench into all this. But we, one thing we were trying to find out, we never could quite get to the bottom of is kind of the process that's currently going on for building permits and alterations. Like how many are going through a staff review or how many are being passed from staff review to the Historic Preservation Board for certificates of appropriateness? And I think if you can pull that data, I think that the Historic Preservation Board will be able to function, you know, with more knowledge of like how many, how many permits are being requested and what are routine reviews? And how many are being approved or denied? I think that's worth exploring. And also reevaluate the current roster that you have of contributing and non-contributing resources in your local historic district and pair that against what we found in this survey and as found in the report. And also I would recommend, especially since you have a Historic Preservation Board now, to do a pamphlet that has recommended treatments and non-recommended treatments using the Secretary of Interior Standards, which I understand that the Historic Preservation Board is using as, as their guide. But if you make it more specific to your community, for routine things that I noticed out in the field were again, enclosed rafter tails on these craftsman style homes and bungalows, inappropriate infill on the bottom of the residences, you know, change out of vinyl windows, vinyl siding, et cetera. And I would also recommend to do design guidelines that are again, unique to your community. Again, the, the Historic Preservation Board is using the National Park Secretary of Interior Standards for rehabilitation. But I think if you had something that was refined more to the particular styles and periods of significance to Saint Cloud, that would be more ideal. For instance, you have a lot of the Span of Florida style buildings. How are they being treated? And also you have so many kit homes. If you could find more information on the original models and maybe communicate with other communities that have a variety of these type of pre-manufactured homes, that would be ideal as well. And that's something that also the Florida Main Street Program and the CLG Coordinator at the Florida Department of State can assist you with. And that, that ends my formal presentation. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett. Does any one of the council have a question you'd like to ask? Ms. Councilwoman Askew.
Thank you, Mayor. That was a great presentation. I was lucky enough to get it, my hand on it a little bit earlier because I sit on the Main Street Board. There's a lot of recommendations there and I could see that we're having some challenges with the city. And if, I'll just give you an example of one in the historical area of downtown on between Twelfth Street and Eleventh Street. There is a commercial building there, a bungalow, it doesn't even look like a bungalow anymore, it looks like a big white box. So I asked some questions, we really don't have anything in place. And so I, I think with all these things, I would, I would suggest that we have a workshop and maybe invite the folks that are doing this to come. And when we need to make some hard decisions before we start losing some of these more places. There's, Chitty didn't even bring up, there's Isabel Roberts built some houses in the grid and they were torn down. So I, I, I'm, this is the, this is basically the stepping ground for our historical board. And I don't think that, and I've been watching some of the historical meetings before the COVID. I think that we need to get the pallets and the books and all these recommendations that you're asking for. And I think the only way we're going to be able to do that is we're going to have to sit down in a workshop and hash this thing out. Because we got a historical board that I don't think that they're being guided the correct way. And I think there's been a lot of turnover in staff and stuff. But this, with the growth of our city and the, and our downtown, we could blink in five years, all these buildings can look totally different. I have a building that they put bricks or stones on it. It's a nineteen fifteen building, it's a historical building. I bought it, it already had stone, these stones they put on the outside. That's not supposed to be like that. So I think there should be some better way for a person who owns a building to walk in and go, hey, we can guide you. This is, here's the book, this is where we're doing, we have a person that is specifically for historical places. I think that that, in most cities, they usually have somebody that's as an expertise at this and can help guide the residents. And maybe we can save our, a lot of these homes. Florida's beautiful, a lot of beautiful houses in the grid. I just hate for us to blink and, you know, it'd be great two hundred years from now, those buildings are still there and they look great. And I think that will bring also economic development to us as well. So I think that we really need to thank you for this, this is fantastic. I think there's things we're all kind of thinking when it's down on paper and you see all those recommendations, I think we need to tackle, tackle this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We have it, Councilmember Trace.
Thank you. As Councilmember Askew said, great, great presentation. If you could email it to us too, just where I, I want to be able to absorb some of it more. I, I want to be able to, to, to have one of these done, you know, ten years from now and show how much, you know, some of these structures have improved and how much some of the character of some of these have improved. And they haven't been demolished, they, you know, some of the ones that need to be fixed up have been fixed up. A lot of people are making some investment in the grid and I think it's great. And we just need to make sure that we continue that. So I, I agree with Councilmember Askew's recommendation, let's have a workshop. Let's, let's put a plan together of how, through planning staff or in the building department, how we can incorporate some of these recommendations.
I, I did share the slideshow with the city and I will say it is a little bit longer than what I presented tonight. I, I did, I did a run through it with my husband and it was a little long. So you, you'll have a more expanded version that's available at the city.
And I, I think it's interesting too, the kit homes that have, have been done in the city too. I, I did, I went down a rabbit hole one day of Sears and Roebuck catalog houses. And there's a bunch of them in Chicago. And like, next time I go up there, I want to tour some of those neighborhoods. I think it's, I think it's awesome. Whole house showed up on truck and homeowners just built it for two thousand dollars back in, you know, the forties.
Well, and that's another recommendation that we made is to make that into a walking tour or even when COVID goes away, some sort of a house tour that's unique to Saint Cloud. I think there's a lot, you know, there's a whole tiny home movement and you could really tap into that crowd by really further identifying them and bringing homeowners together to, to conduct a tour.
Yeah, and the one that Olive does every year is great and her, and her whole team. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from council? Well, Ms. Corbett, we certainly appreciate the thorough, excellent job that you've done. And thank you for working with Main Street and Ms. Stark. And we look forward to continuing that relationship. Thank you so much, you did an excellent job.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Take care.
Councilwoman Askew.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I, is it possible to get a, what council thinks about having a workshop regarding some of these recommendations?
Well, I would certainly be in favor of a workshop.
Excellent.
So.
That was just for Bill, you know. I understand. I'm clear, thank you.
This time we'll move on to a presentation regarding our utility. Ms. Craig, are you here?
I am here. I'm going to share my screen. And just like the last time, I'll, I have my handy assistant Cameron Crandall, who will be assisting me during the presentation. So can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
So the first part is on the, our community water initiative and the pipe cleaning. As you know, we've got the.
Give me a second. Paula, if you can hear me, you need to turn, you need to mute your mic. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so this is a summary slide, y'all know most of this. July two thousand seventeen, city manager ordered an investigation because he became aware of the complaints and y'all made sure that the investigation was carried out. We hired an engineer, that it was found that these polishing filters here had failed. So here's two photos of the, the failure of the polishing filters themselves. It took quite some time to, they're very complicated. It took a couple of years to get those designed and installed, but they're implement, they're operational now. And we've continued to clean the pipes since two thousand and seventeen with regular flushing and the other methods. And I'll, I'll, we'll go through that. And of course, numerous staff changes. Brian Wheeler was brought in, he's been amazing. And, and of course, I came on board in May. I knew about the issue and, and I've been very dedicated in continuing the efforts that were begun by you, the leadership and the city manager. Throughout COVID, we never were at home, we were out there still cleaning the pipes. One of the newest things in twenty twenty, we've really increased our public outreach. So here's a picture of the, the new polishing filters being installed. So just to quickly go through the methods of pipe cleaning that we've used over the last several years, regular conventional flushing and then unidirectional flushing, which is a really systematic way to clean material out of pipes and to flush the resin out of the pipe. And it's, it's actually typically designed using hydraulic model and through an engineering firm or, or technical staff can design one to, to provide an effective flushing program. So one of the parts of the initiative, the consultant developed the original unidirectional flushing program for Saint Cloud for the transmission mains. What's a transmission main? It's the big main water pipes in the system. In this case, it's equal to or greater than a ten-inch pipe. And that program was executed four times over twenty eighteen to twenty twenty. And it's still, while much of the resin has been flushed out of the system, it was not enough. We added supplemental flushing with ice pigging in twenty twenty. Y'all have heard about what that is and you know that it's really best in the shorter runs of pipe. And we also supplemented it with line swabbing, which is good for the longer runs of pipe. So on, on the left part of the slide, we just have a summary here. And you can, you can tell an engineer came up with those totals because they're very exact on the amount of unidirectional flushing, ice pigging and line swabbing. You can see that we've done a considerable amount of cleaning in the last couple of years. And we've made a lot of progress. And at this point, I'm just, I'm going to share, this is a, you know, a picture's worth a thousand words. I'm going to turn it over to Cameron and he's going to share with you kind of the unidirectional flushing. He was here during that time and he also helped design the extended flushing program through the side streets. Cameron, are you there?
Yes, Lo, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Cameron Crandall, Deputy Director, Environmental Utilities. Yes, what we're seeing here is we're seeing a map. It incorporates where we did the unidirectional flushing, also the ice pigging and swabbing. This map, you can really see the unidirectional flushing, so I'm going to talk about that first. The yellow, green, purple and blue shaded areas are, each color represents a different zone. There were several sequences within, within each zone. That just represented the areas that were affected when we did the unidirectional flushing, like Marjorie spoke about earlier. We concentrated on the ten-inch pipes and, and larger. And we also concentrated in the areas where we were seeing the watercolor issues come up. You can kind of see it, it follows that old Canoe Creek Road corridor, you know, Water Plant Four. You can see it down on the left, bottom left, that little purple pipe leads into Water Plant Four. So really seeing, we were really seeing a lot of the watercolor issues closer to Water Plant Four. So that's where we were concentrating our efforts at. Marjorie, move to the next slide, please. Okay, so this is the, the second map, this, and you can really see the, where we did the ice pigging and the line swabbing a little better here. The ice pigging and the purple pipes and then the line swabbing and the orange pipes. You can see for the line swabbing, we did longer runs, we hit all the, most of the main roads. You can see Neptune, Lake Shore, Canoe Creek, Nolte Road, Michigan. The, the swabbing really excelled at cleaning the longer running pipes. And the ice pigging, we, we used on the smaller, shorter runs, like within the neighborhoods themselves. This map, or this graph rather, shows customer service contacts per week. We chart this information, we, because it tells us a couple of things. It tells us if there's an issue coming up that we don't know about or if it tells us if we're being effective in what we're doing out in the field. Recently, if you look to the far right, that's, that's us in October here. We've had a couple of months of consistently low watercolor issues, which is the, the green line. And then the red line represents city work, work orders where we send an operator in the field to do some spot flushing.
Sorry about that.
I just wanted to talk, earlier in the year, that's April, you see that big spike? That was when we first started doing line swabbing. And that required us shutting down some large transmission lines, long, long lengths of large transmission lines. So that kind of affected pressures for a large area of the cities. And that's where we saw a lot of calls come in. We did let people know that it was happening, we handed out water, but we still received a couple of calls. And, but after that, you really see that the, the graph kind of. And, but after that, you really see that the, the graph kind of uh levels out down to these uh, those, the low numbers that we're seeing more normal now where before that you can see them kind of jumping up. They're more a little, a little more volatile. And now after that big jump where we started the line swabbing, it's uh evened out some.
Thank you. So, sorry about the itchy tr- trigger finger on the, on the slide there. Um, so we've continued the cleaning, of course, this year, but we've really tried to, you know, we've listened to the public and they, and they want to know what's going on and, and we've really increased our outreach. Uh, we posted updates on the, on the website routinely. We sent out letters from the city manager or the city manager sent them out. And before an area is pigged, we've made sure email notice, door hangers, we of course post on the website, follow-up surveys, uh, social media, I should probably put that in there too. And before an area is swabbed, of course, the area, when it's swabbed, then you have to go through the two-day boil water notice. So we've been delivering water as well. So uh we also conduct follow-up surveys, which are really, really important part of the swabbing and the pigging to, to see, some folks, they haven't experienced it before. They never experience it. And over a, a period of time, they may one day experience it. Some folks experienced it and then the, the cleaning has gotten rid of it. Uh, and some folks never experience it. So it's been uh, you know, that's why, why it's so important that we hear from our customers. We also implemented a new app. I'd love to say that that, that was me, but that was started well before I got here. Uh, and took uh over a year to complete uh St. Cap Cloud Connect. So if you haven't downloaded it from your favorite app store, then uh you can, you can find it there and make sure it says Florida. This is a, just a screenshot of the, of the app itself. You see planning and zoning, on the, online police reporting, news flash, agenda calendar. You can send us a complaint and a compliment. We'd love to get those twos. Uh, pay your bill, look at the agenda. And we've also stepped up our social media outreach and we're probably gonna in, increase and continue that. Uh, uh, anything that we're doing, I'm, I'm trying to get photos and document what we're doing so that we can share and tell the public exactly what we're doing. Y'all approved uh enhanced um interactive voice response system, the IVR. And that will improve our accuracy for the reverse calls and the, and will allow us to send texts as well. Um, and I described that the last council meeting. And we just rolled out our dedicated website called OurCommunityWater.com. Uh, and it provides information on the issue, just a number of things. This is a, a screenshot of the website itself. And OurCommunityWater.com. We have not put a, we're in the process of putting a link on our own website to get here. So we're, we're just so excited about showing this to you. And yes, that's an example of a department logo. And then here's the, the menu that you can see what that site actually shows. So we've got uh timeline, getting the water to people, the water quality reports, question and answers. And uh, in a minute, I'll share the site as well, if that's something that y'all want to see. Where are we? And I think that's the, that's the magic question. We believe that most of the resin is out of the system. Is it all out? We don't think so, but we've made a tremendous amount of progress. We just conducted line swabbing in uh mid-September. I went out there in the middle of the night. They did it through the night and um the water, the, the runs, the, the amount of time it took to clear out the pipe was much, much shorter. You can see this is just a shot from one of the pipe runs. I've got video and, and photos. It's, it's so, it's, it's amazingly better. But we're gonna continue until it's clean. We're not gonna stop. Again, it's so important to hear from our customers uh if they're having a problem. We, we believe that in the affected area, there's 12,500 accounts. Um, and our complaints are two or three a week and, and we're going for zero, of course. We don't want any. We don't want anybody to have to deal with us. Uh, but we need to know uh what's going on and customers can help us. Marianna, do you have um the um there's a video
Yes, Kathy has that video and she's gonna be able to share that for us.
Great. And after the video, I'll, I'll give you an update on the sanitary sewer situation.
The city of St. Cloud had a state-of-the-art, internationally recognized water treatment system. So when the calls first came in, the city wasn't sure what to make of them. Customers said their drinking water was discolored, usually a light red or brownish. They were told to flush their systems and told how to do it, but the problem didn't go away. Briefed on the issue, the newly elected city council ordered an investigation. They hired a new city manager and made the issue a priority. The investigation began, experts were hired, staff were fired and leaders were told how it happened. It was two things. A part of the water treatment system had failed and a manufacturer of the resin used in the water treatment process changed it without letting the city know. It took a year to design, build and install a new water filter system. That was completed on time last year. The experts recommended the city begin a system-wide flushing program to remove any resin that might still be in the pipes. It was immediately approved by the city council and the city manager initiated the program. Though there was improvement, the water was still not clear. Staff was directed to urgently search for technologies to fix it. Still, St. Cloud's water met all state and federal drinking water standards. Staff used proven and new technologies to clean the inside of the water delivery pipes. And things got much better, much faster. The city and the customers were a partnership that worked, even through the lockdown and the pandemic threat. We're still working through some areas that have occasional discoloration. We'll continue to work on it until all of the water is all clear always.
Thank you.
Are you through, Marjorie?
Uh, no, I, it popped off for a minute.
Okay. I didn't think so.
Yeah, I know you'd like me to be through, but um here is, uh, I'd like to give an update on the, the, the flooding task force. So it's, this is the sanitary sewer system where we've experienced the high flows during intense rain events. Everybody can see it?
Yes, we can see it.
Making sure. Okay, so last time I gave you a little bit more, uh, you know, in-depth presentation that listed all the things and all the data that we've looked at. And so um I shortened that part because we, we're still looking at that data, but what is it, where are we now? I, I know that's really the crux of it and that's what you want to know. So please be assured, everybody, uh, we want you to know that we haven't stopped even when it's not raining. Uh, we are, were able to start some TVing. I, I know Councilman Cooper, that's gonna make you very, very happy. We were able to, it makes, no one's happier than I am, believe me. Able to TV a little, uh, TV Tennessee, not the whole state, that's Tennessee Avenue and part of Georgia Avenue. And we found some small inflow areas that will, we will address. Of course, then it started raining again. Uh, we continued our field recon to see if we could see anything, pole manholes, look in there to see. And a really big help, uh, Nassim and his Public Works team uh were able to make uh lower the stormwater ponds at the lake shore. They, they were able to make that happen and I can't tell you how difficult that can be. Uh, so many, many thanks to Public Works for their help in recon and the, the, the lake levels there. So we experienced another intense rain event on September 30th. Uh, of course, we pulled the lift station. I was out taking pictures at, you know, midnight of the, the lake levels, but we were able to narrow down the inflow to a few collection sub-basins. And we're moving forward with a contractor that I mentioned in the last council meeting to perform inflow abatement services. What is that? What is an inflow abatement service? That is um inspecting manholes, that's uh sealing them with elastaseal in, in the brick pair area, conducting smoke tests and installing uh cleanout plug installation. If you, can you still see me or or not? Okay, so this is a cleanout plug. Most places, most people, most residences have two cleanouts. One's close to their house. It's about a four-inch cleanout pipe with a cap. And one is closer to the right-of-way line. So on some, sometimes you have cleanouts that are constantly being hit and broken. Uh, and so one thing that these folks do is, and they've just been doing this for, you know, 25 years, they'll install a cleanout plug here. And it's dark. You can't see it in there and it's, it'll, it'll stay in there. They assured me. I'll be testing them, that's for sure. So that, the report that they're gonna give us and they're gonna do midnight runs to test things as well. And we'll be out there with them. They're gonna give us a prioritized condition assessment of our sewer system. And then, and importantly, identify inflow areas. So part of that report, we're gonna develop into a, a repair and replacement CIP program and, and phase that. Um, but the, the priority is to identify what is causing that a million gallon per day inflow. Uh, and again, I'm gonna turn it over to Cameron and he's gonna tell you uh about the data that we pulled after the most recent rainfall event.
Thank you, Marjorie. Yeah, so if, if you look at this graph here, I get to do all the graphs, the fun part here. Uh, the, the red represents uh rain events. If you look over on the right side of the graph, we've got the scale of um inches of rain. This is pulled from South Florida Water Management District Rain Gauge, which is right near um East Lake Toho, just the west side of the grid. We've had four rain events in September that were over one inch. And if you look at the, on the left, that was the uh, the be- uh, beginning of September, we had two rain events. It was on nine, seven and, and uh September 9th. The blue represents sewer backups. So we saw a huge spike in sewer backups associated with the heavy rainfall. Over those two days, we had, you know, almost over three inches of rain in those three days. That's when we immediately got to work. We got out in the field doing field reconnaissance. Uh, some, a lot of the stuff Marjorie was talking about earlier. And so we just wanted to show that on uh, at the end of September, on uh nine twenty-seven and nine thirty, we had two big rain events again. But we did not see the big spike in sewer backups. We s- we still saw four sewer backup issues. We want to get that number to zero. That's why we're, we're moving forward with this inflow abatement service. But we did see an improvement from the work we did in the field, the TVing, the field reconnaissance and fixing the, the several issues we found with the help of Public Works.
We think the stormwater pond lowering made a big difference there.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all of your work and the update. We know you've been inundated and we certainly appreciate your consistency and all the hard work. Thank you for the report. Does anyone on the council have any questions you'd like to ask or comments? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Blackwell.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you guys for the update. Um, a lot of good information. Um, I actually had my uh, my street and it's a, it's a little street, but um it was uh swabbed the other week. Great um notification by utility department. We had the bottled water, a couple of letters. I mean, that, that all has, that's worked out really well. One thing I just want to see if it's an opportunity for us to um improve on. Uh, some of the businesses along 182, um, some of those lines had to go down for um swabbing and some of those businesses have to shut down for two days, essentially three days. Um, is it possible to bring in and do ice pigging for some of those when it impacts some of these businesses that, you know, are kind of limping along as it is and we're shutting them down for a couple of days?
So um council, Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Director, Councilman Trace, um, we will for sure look into that for the future. We were really sensitive to shutting down uh these businesses because of everything that they've been through. And that was a really hard thing to do. We did alter some of the, the scheduling uh as much as we possibly could, pushed it as late as we could so that they could stay open as long as they could. But we also um working through the night, sometimes we're not done until six in the morning even. Making sure everything's uh complete. Um, the ice pigging right now is not available uh at all anyway because the, the folks that used to do it uh have decided not to, to stay in the ice pigging business and, and no one really understands why in the industry. Um, but there are others that are looking into starting up that business again. So we're hopeful.
And then do you guys have an update on the slip lining um grant application?
I do not have an update. Uh, Leslie, are you on the line? Or Cameron, have you heard anything? Because I know we've all been working on it. But I haven't heard any update on it.
Uh, this is Cameron Crandall, Deputy Director. I haven't heard anything either. I, I think it's, it's gonna be probably a couple more months. Uh, in the, in the past couple of grants we've applied for, it's, it's taken four or five months to, to get a response.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper. Thank you. Have we done any swabbing in the, in the grid right now?
Councilman Cooper, we have not done any swabbing in the grid. Uh, that is not an area that we've had any complaints uh about the resin. And, but if we were to receive complaints, we would go out there and, and do some additional testing to see what's going on. Um, I live in the grid also and I have not seen anything. My neighbors have not either. But I'm, well, I'm always watchful. I ask everyone that I see. I talk to them about it. Uh, everyone. Uh, they, they know to tell me if they, if they see anything.
Well, I guess the question is that the, the grid system is probably 70, 80 years old now and most of these pipes have never even been swabbed the first time. So I'm sure there's got a plenty of rust in there. And I think if you get started on that, you would have a lot cleaner problem than you've got now in the grid. Also, maybe you're not seeing it, but you're probably tasting it, drinking it.
So when you have iron pipes, you want to be very careful when you can do swabbing. Normally, under normal conditions, you want to uh do the swabbing or pigging. Swabbing is another, you know, pigging is a kind of a universal word in utilities for clean, putting something inside of a pipe and cleaning it. So ice pigging is a method of pigging. Line swabbing is a method of pigging. We just differentiated it because it's a giant, you know.
Understand.
Well, okay. Um, so when you clean an iron pipe, uh, you improve the uh, you, you usually do it before you're gonna line that pipe. And you usually only line pipes that are a certain diameter. Um, I mean, we just would want to take that a little more cautiously. And uh, regular, i- if you're not experienced in the resin, it's really not something that's done. We do flushing. We still flush, do a lot of uni- unidirectional flushing. As, as a matter of fact, the grid was extensively uh flushed between 2017 and now extensively.
Okay. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So this question is maybe more for the city manager. And thank you, um, Marjorie, for your updates on all this. I know this is kind of uh, I do a lot of this stuff at my job and I call it forensic engineering, like when you're trying to like work backwards and figure out why the heck something's happening. I know it's, I know it's challenging. Um, but I'm just wondering, like, is there any plan for us to take a global look at the grid? And you know, like when you go down the streets of the grid and then they And, you know, like when you go down the streets of the grid and then they, the quality of the roads vary drastically as you go street to street to street, right? And the section of the road varies drastically when you go street to street. Some have on-street parking, some have one-street parking, some have a wider section, some have an narrow section. You know, we get a lot of complaints about speeding cars and a lot of it, I think, is, you know, another, it's the big straightaway that we have. And also in a lot of the street sections, it's a pretty wide section, so it makes people feel comfortable to drive fast. But, you know, we have a lot of issues in the grid. So I'm just wondering, like, is there ever a thought to do a global, like, master plan of the grid and maybe start chunking it out two streets a year and fix the drainage, fix the utilities, get the sidewalks in there, you know, get a section, here's the section that we're going to have in the grid. I know this isn't a popular suggestion I'm going to make, but, you know, on the streets that have parking on one side, it doesn't make sense to me that you wouldn't put the mailboxes on the other side and have the garbage collection on the other side, you know, like so the garbage and mail delivery aren't fighting the cars all down the one side of the street, you know? Is there like a thought, like, let's, let's start fixing this area, you know, use our stormwater utility fees, use our utility fees and start like doing a wholesale programmatic fix for the roads and the drainage and utilities and trails and all of that? Is there any thought of doing that?
Mayor, will you recognize?
Yes, you may, Mr. Turgeon.
Hey, um, yes, ma'am. I'm going to have Naseem address that. In fact, we just met with Tetra Tech to start that process specifically with stormwater. So Naseem, can you speak to that for a second?
Yes, sir. This is Naseem Madora, Public Works Director. May I be recognized, sir?
Yes, you may.
Okay, yes, sir. Yeah, so we've met with Tetra Tech, a, a contract, excuse me, one of the A need designers on our continuing contract to discuss scope in regards to a stormwater master plan specifically for the grid area to address issues in regards to, in order to help identify gr- stormwater, stormwater, stormwater planning growth in the grids and also to help address any kind of ma- either maintenance or repair type concerns that we need to address with. And of course, look into our future planning in terms of where currently needs are and of course our future needs are on that. So that's, we're pushing forward on that specifically. And in terms of roads, I'll, I'll, I'll speak on that, sir, if, in regards to our, we, we, we do have a, we did complete a citywide pavement condition index. And we're in utilizing that in order to re, where we're going to re, develop a road paving master plan. So we'll be able to utilize, you know, reprioritize the road repairs based on pavement condition indexes.
And can I go back to, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor.
Well, that's, those were all good things. That's not really what I'm talking about though. Like, that's more maintenance and repairs and, you know, I'm just thinking like a global look at, like, what should the road section be? How should the drainage? You know, some streets have enclosed drainage, some streets have roadside wells, some people have curbs, some people don't have curbs. Like, is there a thought to like, like unify the grid and, and do like, you know, wholesale kind of improvements? I know what Naseem was talking about are, are good things, but that's more like pavement index. You're just looking at, should you millinery surface or should you do this? I mean, it's like, I'm just saying, like, a master plan for the area.
Mrs. Turgeon?
I, I understand what you're saying. I know that Marjorie's going to do a, a utilities assessment also with USSI, but, and I thought that that was addressed in the Envision St. Cloud Plan. It talks about some of that redesign and reimagining the grid system, if I remember correctly.
So I guess I'm thinking, like, this is a great opportunity, like, we have drainage issues, we have utility issues. If you're going to be, you know, open cutting roads and repairing base failures and repairing asphalt, like, maybe try to make a, an overhaul program. I don't know how the other council members feel. I just know when I'm, when I'm down in the grid, I'm like, gosh, this street is a lot better than that street, this street has drainage, that street doesn't, you know, this street, you know, there's just, it's just like a non-uniformity through the.
Is that, if I got to ask a question from your background, is that something that happens when something is not master planned and it's just got a piecemeal together over the years? Is that what happens where it gets inconsistent?
Well, it's just, we had dirt roads.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
We had dirt roads and then they got, yeah, I mean, so it was just, they just paved. I mean, so, yeah, I mean, yeah, like you need a master plan, but of course, you know, our community is old, but I'm just saying, like, maybe we go and systematically, I know you can't do it all at one time, but do you say, we're going to do one road a year, we're going to do two roads a year, we're going to do something? And then, you know, it's the Swiss cheese effect. Eventually, in 20 years, you'd make it through the whole system.
May I be recognized?
Yes, you may.
I'm Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Director. I think, and I don't want to speak for Naseem, but I think once Naseem and I conduct the condition assessments and while we're doing the sanitary sewer one now, we'll also be doing a water one, then you, you're, you're looking at the criticality of operation and you're looking at prioritizing those repairs. And, and Deputy Mayor, like you said, I mean, I, I think you don't want to go pave one road and then suddenly have to tear it up and replace the utility. So once we have those plans, then we can start thinking about doing something that called like complete streets and then prioritize it based on, you know, the risk of failure and the criticality of operations and, and try to apply for some grants as well. So it, you know, unfortunately, nothing's really fast and waving a magic wand, but Naseem, I know is very committed to this and, and as is I am I, so.
So if I could just, the way I understand, we're looking for like a revitalization plan for the grid area. Would that be a fair assessment to say that?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's ever any thoughts to it? Because, you know, if you just go down street to street to street, it's just kind of a hodgepodge of, of, of things that just happens over time, you know? Is there any thought, you know, like if you made the streets more narrow, maybe we could look at addressing the speeding that's going on? You know, people fly down those streets. You know, maybe do we need to put four-way stops at Fifth Street? I don't know. I mean, you know, who wants additional stop signs? Not me, but, you know, people are drag racing down these streets. It's crazy. So, you know, just look, trying to think of ways to look at things globally and take advantage of opportunities we have with maintenance and, and other things that need to be done.
Councilmember Rescue.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I agree with Deputy Mayor. Like when I moved here, they just finished the road, Pennsylvania, and we're like, okay, can we get reclaimed water? No. Why, why can't? You just redid the whole road. Why wouldn't you just lay that pipe there, you know? So I think that we should have some sort of master plan for this. When a road's being redone, are we just doing all the pipes? Are we putting reclaim? Are we not doing that? So, yeah, I would, I would like to see a little bit more. And I appreciate all the work utilities and, and it's doing. That's it, thanks.
Mr. Turgeon. I'm thinking that we just add this into our strategic plan for next year. That's what I'm thinking. That'd be a great thing to just add in there and, and look forward and, and start working on that.
Well, I would certainly support that also, so.
Okay.
I think that's what we want.
Put it in there.
Good. Are we ready to move on?
Yes, sir, I think so.
Brings us to our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is required or requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the residing officer prior to or soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone in the chamber or online to speak to the consent agenda?
We do not have one, no one in the chamber. And I do not have anyone online registered to speak under this time.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to the consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If any one of the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now's the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. First but last, is there anyone on the council that wants to speak to a particular item? Madam Clerk, is anyone in the chamber or online who is requested to speak to the consent agenda?
Mayor, I do not have anyone online or in the chamber at this time.
Thank you. Then could I entertain a motion and/or discussion from the council regarding the consent agenda?
Motion approved. Consent agenda items A through H.
Agreed.
We have a motion for Councilmember Trace for the approval of the consent agenda. A second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
You said aye. Motion carries, Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
That brings us to our public hearings. Item number one, Madam Clerk, please read that item for us.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2020-21. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of R1B, single-family dwelling compatible with low-density residential future land use designation for approximately 0.34 acres identified as Katzenberger. Located east of Missouri Avenue and south of Town Park Court, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map following the Planning Commission's recommendations, proof of publication, survivability, conflicts and effective date.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. This is Andre. May I be recognized, please?
Yes, you may, Andre.
Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This is the final public hearing for DRCK ZMA 2000003, ordinance 2020-21. It is for a rezoning of two parcels, 0.34 acres. And it's identified as Katzenberger project and it is for rezoning to R1B. Next slide, please. A little bit of background, the existing zoning on the property is agricultural. The proposed zoning is that it's to R1B, single-family dwelling. The future land use is low-density residential. It's compatible with this surrounding area and there are no adverse impacts to the cities' facilities at this time. Next slide, please. The strategic plan goal that is consistent with this for growth management. Next slide. And during St. Cloud's staff at our meeting on, on May 26th, recommended approval of ordinance 2020-21. The Planning Commission at their meeting on August 18th also recommended approval based on the 16 findings in the Land Development Code and asked the city council recommend approval. You'd recommend approval at your first meeting on September 10th. And now we're asking for you to make the file approval and adoption of ordinance 2020-21. I have to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is the applicant here wanting to speak to this again?
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
May I speak?
Yes, you may.
I have registered the applicant, Gary Fitz. He's just available if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the chamber or online that has requested to speak to this item?
I have no one in the chambers or no one else online.
Then we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Councilmember Cooper?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Cooper for the adoption of ordinance number 2020-21. Do I have a second?
Agreed.
I have a second, Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. That brings us to council action, item number one. Madam Clerk?
Resolution number 2020-264R, a resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida approving a loan known as a local government area opportunity loan for Madison Grove LLC in amount of $460,000 to fund the development of the Ford, of an affordable elderly apartment project in the city of St. Cloud and providing an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor. If I could be recognized?
Yes, you may, Ms. Clausen.
Thank you, sir. Wendy Palazzo, Finance Director. Resolution number 2020-264R. Background on this item is for the Madison Grove Track Four and Five Local Option Loan. If you recall, on the 22nd of August on 2019, the city council approved Resolution 2019-195R, which authorized and approved the council to use the OUC Business Development and Customer Retention Fund in the amount of $560,002.50. This was to satisfy the goal or requirement from the FHFC, which stands for the Florida Housing Finance Corp. The application was submitted by Madison Grove LLC in November of 2019. The application did not receive a favorable lottery number and therefore this is the new request to resubmit as there is another, the same option. However, the request and loan amount is now reduced by the state requirements to $460,000. Next slide, please. Some of the parameters of the application, they will be submitted by November 5th of 2020. This is a summary below of everything you've gotten in the background as far as the requirements for the local option. I'm just summarizing some of the key highlights here. Madison LLC has a greater advantage at this point. As of last year, there were four allocations, four applications. This year, there are five. As of last year, on the 2019, there were 23 applications that competed for the qualification of the LGAO. And then this year, there's only a maximum of 14 applications that are going to compete for the first three allocations. The FHFC has also adopted a rule giving all of the applications that were submitted last year priority over all the other applications. And then again, as mentioned already, the required amount has been lowered from the $560,002.50 to $460,000. The FHFC now requires, as well listed, that the loan must be a permanent funding source, either a grant or a long-term loan. Next slide, please. Finally, a summation of the request for the local government support agreement would be the loan amount of $460,000. The funding date would be at certificate of occupancy and of construction prior to the certificate of occupancy, currently with an interest rate gain of 4%, payable monthly. The terms would be for 22 years, however, the amortization would be 30 years to include the PNI or principal and interest. And the security on this loan would be the second mortgage lien on the Madison Grove development. To generalize everything and what this means to, to the city when loaning the money, if I can get the next slide, this will summarize what an amortization schedule looks like with the terms that I've listed. You'll notice the $460,000 at 4% with loan period of 30. This is estimating that the first payment would begin on December 1st of 2020. This could, of course, change. The award notification would come in November, however, we did a schedule for you just to have a visual. The total payment to include principal and interest would be $2,196.11. Of that, 1,533 would be interest. And we are looking to gain a total interest year over year of $18,252. When all is said and done, over an amortization of 30 years, you're looking at $232,000. Above that in interest gained from the amortization and completion of the, of the payment for the $460,000. Final slide, please. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 2020 and requested action for council is as well approval of Resolution 2020-264. Thank you. And if there's any questions on the financials, please let me know. And I believe Madison Grove is here with their presentation or, or what they would like to speak about. Thank you.
If the representative from Madison Grove would like to speak, we'll give you the opportunity at this point.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor, this is Stacy Bannick. Can you hear me all right?
Here, you fine.
Okay, great. So I thought Wendy did a good job there of going through the summary of what we're requesting. I would, if you'd like me to, and I'd like to, is, you know, go through what our development looks like, the advantages of it, and I'll just do our final request one more time, if that's all right.
Go ahead.
I have shared my screen, I believe. Can everyone see the screen that I have up?
Not yet.
This is Kathy. Let me refresh you, and you should reconnect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can we have a screen up?
Okay, so can everyone see the screen I'm sharing?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I'll go ahead and begin. Again, this is on behalf of American Residential Communities in the name of our proposed development is Madison Grove. I think, I believe everyone here is familiar. We were at the DSD meeting, went through a majority of this information, but, you know, we'll go through here again. We're a very experienced affordable housing development company, and we've been doing this a long time. In fact, we've been submitting this project for a long time. So we're really hoping to go forward this year. Last year, we were, this last go-around, we were successful in the large counties. We were able to develop, and it's shown here, we were, got tax credits for two large county projects, one in Orange County and one in Tampa, and then we have another one in Cape Coral we were awarded. So, you know, we're hoping that this go-around will be for St. Cloud for this year of 2020. You know, we've been through this a bunch of times. These are, you know, it truly is affordable housing that we're providing. It's for the very low and extremely low income. And if you can see right here, these are, you know, the one bedrooms start at $373 on average, and the two bedrooms are at $889, so very affordable. This is a site plan that you can see for, you know, we switched this year from lots five and six, excuse me, tracks five and six, and now we're on tracks four and five. So, you know, we're applying for one of these this year. Ultimately, we would like to build out both phases. I'd like to pull up our website just to kind of demonstrate a few things for you. You know, we can kind of go through some of our features and amenities we offer, and I can show you some of the buildings that we've built. Let me pull this up for you. So generally, we, you know, we build two, three, four, five, six, seven stories, but the seven-story communities are kind of our bread and butter. We just finished Madison Point and downtown Clearwater last year. Obviously, Madison Crossing, one and two, just around the corner from St. Cloud. Madison Heights and downtown Tampa. Kind of go through some of our features and amenities. Here are some interior pictures of our.
Stacy, you're not sharing your website.
We're not getting your website.
Oh, you're not getting it? Sorry. We tried this out earlier to make sure it worked, and I'm not sure why it's not sharing. Let's see. That's unfortunate. Sorry, we tried this out earlier and it was working. I'm not sure why you can't see that. Let me try to, sorry. Try one more thing, and I won't hold you up too much here. Here we go. How about now?
There you go.
Ah, okay, great. So here is Madison Crossing, just down the road, phase one and phase two. And then I just wanted to go through a gallery of some of our interior pictures here, so you can see what we're proposing. Generally, our, you know, our development features and amenities. We have a lot of amenities for affordable elderly. Anyway, we have carded secure entries. We have conveniently located elevators, of course. Washers and dryers, we provide them for our tenants in every unit. Majority of the affordable developers just provide hookups. We have full-size kitchens with Energy Star appliances, Energy Star rated windows, ceiling fans in all living areas, programmable thermostats. We provide 24-hour emergency maintenance on our property, lots of community activities and our beautiful landscaping. And inside the building, we always provide a large activity room. It's kind of our main gathering room. We have a theater room, a fitness center, billiards room, game room. We always have, you know, we have a swimming pool with a beautiful eye. You know, you can just see that the quality of what we build here, you know, doesn't look like affordable housing. If you ever take a tour, you can see it's a really nice property. All of our properties are. We have, as I mentioned, Madison Landing. This is in, we just broke ground in Orlando. Here's kind of a rendering of the project we're building in in Orange County right now. We started this one about two months ago. We had a groundbreaking with the mayor and commissioner. It was a, it was a great day, and we're looking forward to doing this in St. Cloud. I'd like to go back to my PowerPoint, so I'll close this out and bring my PowerPoint back up. Bear with me just a second. Now I'm getting the hang of this. Okay. So basically, you know, what we're looking to do here, the project benefits, you know, we'll have an elimination of the liabilities for the bonds and the taxes that, you know, the DSD currently has to pay on this property. It'll bring an increased tax revenue to St. Cloud, create jobs, you know, during construction and even after. And, you know, I think one of the most important things, we'll provide affordable housing and elderly housing to St. Cloud. You know, some information here that we have is, there's only seven true affordable housing developments in St. Cloud, 750 units, and there is not a single one of those that are for the elderly. Now, there is some, of course, there's elderly ALF. There's lots of different kinds of elderly housing in the state of Florida, but True Regulated Florida Housing Finance Corp. With HUD rents that are set for affordable housing. As I said, there's only seven of them in St. Cloud, and zero of them are for elderly. We have, you know, basically from our request last year, the main thing that has, there's basically two differences. We have the loan request amount, this is all per Florida Housing, their requirements has gone down from 560 to 460. So, you know, that's a good thing. The one thing that I would like to, you know, find out what kind of questions you have and explain why this has happened is that we, last year, we wanted to pay the loan off right away. This is not a loan that is required for this development to move forward, except for the fact that Florida Housing requires it to be a permanent source of financing. So this is the, last year was the first year they had come up with the, what's called the Local Government Areas of Opportunity Funding Preference in Median County. So there were a lot of things that got hashed out in Median County. We follow all of the, you know, litigations and the rules, and then the questions and answers, and then lots of things that are happening. And Florida Housing posted a Q and A, and they have stated and on record that you have to have permanent source of financing, which is considered to be a long-term loan, not a short-term loan. And so we are, and what we show here is a, what we're requesting is 22 years. And the reason that is, again, long-term permanent source of financing. This project, we're going to get, you know, about $17 million in equity. We're going to defer our developer fee, a portion of it, which becomes a source of the financing. And then the last one is, would be the city, it's called the local contribution. And then, oh, excuse me, and then we have, of course, the remainder would be our permanent financing, which would be our first mortgage from our investor, which is Wells Fargo. So Wells Fargo, basically, will carry a bridge loan to cover the construction for the first two years, and then we will have a permanent loan, which will be, you know, roughly about 1.5 million. That'll be, they require it to be 18 years, so now we're at 20 years. And then they require the second mortgage, which would be the city loan, to be, to mature after that, two years after that. So that's where the 22 years comes from. Now, we were speaking with Councilmember Askew yesterday, and we had, just the other day, we had figured out, we had gotten with our lenders, and we had talked, just trying to figure out, is there some way we could cut down to 22 years? And there is one way that we could, you know, we could propose as an option, and we could do a 10-year loan, but it would have to be amateurized at 10 years because the loan can't mature after. It's basically, our lenders say that you can, it has to have an amortization, so there's no balloon rate that happens while their loan, their first mortgage is still in place. So in short, we could do a 10-year, but we would have to amateurize it at 10 years, which brings up, you know, the amount of payment. So we would have to lower that to 1%. So it's still interest, it's still 1%, and it's 10 years. So that's kind of our, you know, it could be 12 years, 15 years, whatever y'all would be, you know, talk and become comfortable with. So as you just saw from Wendy, the 4% at 22 years works out to be a lot of money paid back in interest. So, you know, financially, you know, if you can live with the 22 years, I think it's a good investment. So that's everything that I have, and I can, you know, I'm here to answer any additional questions you have.
Thank you very much. Hang on, please. Madam Clerk, is anyone in the auditorium or online to speak to this item?
Mayor, at this time, we have no one in the audience or no one online for this item.
Thank you. Then we'll open up for discussion and/or motion by council. Do we, Councilmember Askew?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a chance to talk to, for the record, Stacy from Madison. And I guess I was a little, probably more confused, I guess. So I asked him if he could send me all the information regarding the Florida Housing. I read 145 pages, and this is really, this is actually a good thing for the city. It's sort of a government-government and a private entity getting together. This grant was so specific, it told you exactly 48 inches it has to be, it has to have this, it has to have that. So I'm always concerned about our citizens and our money, and this is coming out of the OUC fund. And the OUC fund, normally you give this money out and you don't get it back. So I like how we're taking the direction that this money will be funded back into the city. And I'm okay with the 4% and the 22, and you have any questions?
Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. And for the record, I toured the facility with Mr. Bannon last time this came around. I don't know if it was during the DSD meeting or during the council meeting, but the facility in Osceola County. And it's a beautiful facility, top-notch amenities, and one of the residents there led us in their, in their unit. And, I mean, they have such a pride, that complex and everything. This is all pre-COVID. And, I mean, just overall, I think we need to have more affordable and workforce and senior housing options in our community. I think this is a great program, and I think it's something we should support. You know, to me, the 22 years versus the 10 years doesn't make a huge difference to me. Whatever, what makes a big difference to me is whichever one helps us get this approved. We've been at this for three years. I want it, I want it approved this year. I want this to happen in our community. And then just a question for Mr. Bannon. Is there anything else we can do to help this application along letter support from us, from the county, from state reps, whoever? Is there anything we can do to help our application?
No, no, not at this time. You know, if you all approve this, this gives us everything that we need. It gives us the most ammo for this application with the best odds we can get.
Thank you.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. What is, what is the age of senior housing?
So it's 55 and up. And the average age of our tenants, you know, historically, you know, from all of our senior developments averages about 68, 69.
So, and maybe you mentioned, maybe this was mentioned and I missed it, but, so we're talking about doing this again. Like, when is this funding cycle? Like, when would you know? On one of the slides, it says December of 2020, but I was like, is that an old slide? Because, I mean, that's two months from now.
No, our applications are due November 5th. And generally, Florida Housing releases their submitted report, which has the lottery numbers take two weeks. So that's a, that'll give us a good idea where we stand initially. And then, you know, there's some, Florida Housing will have a scoring committee in January to make it final.
Okay. And then, can you go back to your site plan that you were showing? I just had a question about phasing.
Let me share that screen again.
Yeah, this one. So I know you mentioned this in the last time it came before us, where that you moved the amenities to the center between tracks four and tracks five.
Correct, yes.
So what happens if, so you're saying you're going for track four, you hope to get track five. So let's say you get it for track four. Are you building that whole amenity center?
Absolutely. The amenities will be built with whichever is the first, you know, the first phase to come along.
You're building the whole thing?
Yes.
Yeah, because I was like, so, but, right now, so you would build that on, partially on track five, or you would reconfigure?
No, no, no. So basically, the way this would work is, so we will have, if we get this enclosed in the property, we'll have all of it, tracks four and five in our land contract purchase for a million dollars. And then what we do is create a lot split, and that would create some separation around the amenities area. And then, and then everything would be contained in that first phase, and then we reapply for the second phase, and then just the building and the parking would be in that, you know, parcel.
Okay.
We're doing, we're doing the exact same thing in Orange County right now. I mean, it's identical. And it's, that's exactly how we've handled it, and like I said, it's under construction. If anyone's ever wants to have a look at that project, it's a fantastic project.
Yeah, I just didn't want to, like, find out after the fact, like, oh, we're not building the amenities, so we build phase two or something, you know? So as long as the amenity goes with phase one.
Absolutely.
Well, I took a tour of the Madison project when it first opened up in Kissimmee, and it's just a first-class facility. We are certainly in great need of affordable senior housing, and it's a great need in our city. I would certainly be in favor of this project also. Do we have any further discussion? Then I'll make a motion that we move forward with the approval.
Second.
And we have a second from Councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk, will you please call?
Mayor, one question. Did we make a decision on the 10-year or the repayment period?
No, I think we're deciding, we made a motion here.
Just give the one.
Proceeding with the 22. My motion. Is that understood?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Bannick. We look forward to seeing that building there.
We are, too.
All right.
Night.
Good night. Madam Clerk, will you please read item number three under council action?
Discussion and possible action regarding appointments to committees and vacancies for Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Economic Development Advisory Committee, and Metro Plan Community Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, Council. First, we have the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. We have two vacancies, there alternate one, I'm sorry, seats six and seven for alternates. Actually, I need to go. Anyway, those are both at-large appointments, and we have quite a few applicants. We did a mid-year mass application process, and we got quite a few applicants. So you'll see the first choices we had. Four applicants for their first choice. And both of those seats are at-large.
Councilmember Matheny?
Um, I had somebody I would like to recommend, but I wanted to pose the question to the council. Could we? Could we postpone the appointment to the metro plan? I am aware of some applications that have not yet come in yet, that I'd like to be able to evaluate before we vote on that position.
I don't think that would be a, do we have a consensus then that we postponed the metro plan? Are there any objections? I have a thumb, a thumb and a foot.
Great. I'll make a motion for Mark Begonia.
That's what I'd like to see, if we can have nominations, and then we'll do one motion with all the nominations.
Nomination from Mark Begonia.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for Mr. Lord, Thomas Lord.
Okay.
That's for nomination?
Yes.
Do you have any other nominations, or? If not, then we'll move to EDAC.
Yes, in EDAC, we have one vacant seat, and we have three applicants that have noticed that as their first choice. And this is a co-terminus board, so seat three would be councilmember Cooper's appointment.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to submit for Samantha Colette.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's the only two we have. We will be having planning commission appointment at our next meeting.
Okay. Do we need a motion for the approval of this, or can we just vote on it?
Yes, a motion for the nominations that we just got.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the nominations that were just submitted for Parks and Recreation and the EDAC, Thomas Lord, Mark Begonia, Samantha Colette. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from councilmember Cooper. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Trace? Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And then we will bring back the metro plan for consideration at our next meeting, I assume.
Mayor, once we receive the applications, we will put that back on.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manzares.
I've been quiet all evening, I'll stay quiet.
You have.
Thank you.
Wow, okay. Mr. Sturgeon?
Well, I can't do that, so I'm going to follow that with, I I had sent the council an email last week that we had received funding from the Crysis Aid, Belief and Economic Security Act in the amount of three hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. For us to accept that allocation, we're required to amend our CDBG twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-three consolidated plan and our twenty nineteen annual action plan. Mr. Andrews is working on that, Anderson. This is also going to serve as public notice, and the requirement is for public comment period for at least five days. We're going to extend that to thirty days. Our comment period will go from Monday, October twelfth, two thousand twenty, through Thursday, November twelfth, two thousand twenty. And the proposed amendment is scheduled for adoption by resolution twenty twenty-two six seventy-two six seven R on Thursday, November twelfth, city council meeting, and we will post that in accordance with the rules. I just want to let you guys know that. The second thing I wanted to let you know, beginning tomorrow, I am going to take a long-awaited hiatus for ten days, and the city will be in good hands with acting city manager Veronica Miller.
Thank you. You have anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much. Hope you enjoy your hiatus. Mr. Cooper, councilmember Cooper. You're on mute. Need to unmute your mic.
Thank you. Mr. Sturgeon, we're still moving forward on our sound system for throughout the city?
Yes, sir, that's correct. The update on that is that the vendors that you guys approved last meeting are signing all the documents, and then we ready go out for a short bid, and we'll get it, get it working.
Okay. When will, when will it start?
Well, we we haven't got all the paperwork signed from the vendors. We did our part, we're waiting for the vendors that we approved last meeting to come back with the approved paperwork, and then we have to put it out to bid, and then when, once we get those bids back, we'll begin, commence work.
Okay, so it doesn't have to come back to the council again?
No, sir. No, sir. You guys gave me the authority to move this thing forward, so.
All right, that's, that's fine. That was my question. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Cooper.
Councilmember Matheny.
I don't have anything. Everybody have a great weekend.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace?
Uh, thank you. Just prayers again for the crossing guard that was injured today. It just, just, schools in session, and just in general, everyone drive safe, no texting and driving, all of that. And then for our workshop next Wednesday, because it's on Wednesday. Do we have any backup material that'll be coming for that?
Yes, sir, we finalized the PowerPoint today. It should be coming to you tomorrow, is that correct, Veronica?
Ms. Miller?
She probably fell asleep with me, she's gone so long.
Well, it's perfect. Thank you.
Bill, this is Andre Anderson.
Thank you, Andre.
It's my understanding that it it will be ready tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
And I will be coming back for that from hiatus. Thank you.
All right, very good. Councilmember Askew?
I have nothing other than just, let's get a workshop date for the historic part, so if we can get that as soon as possible, so we can get ready for that. That's it. Everybody stay safe.
Thank you. I just would like to announce that there will be a major food distributions. This is a federally funded program. Wednesday, October the fourteenth, at one to three P M. It will be at my church, Cornerstone Family Church, but it's for the entire community. And all you have to do is show up. With that, I'd like to thank all the staff for all that they've done and all their hard work. Brings us to our information section and the report section. Wednesday, October the fourteenth, we will have a city council workshop at six P M. City Hall that will also be virtual. Thursday, October the twenty-second, we will have a city council special session at five thirty P M. at City Hall. It'll be virtually also. Thursday, October the twenty-second, we will have a city council meeting at six thirty P M. in City Hall will also be virtually. We've issued proclamations in recognition of Pink Heels, proclamation recognition of National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, a proclamation recognition of National Home-Based Business Day. Like remind everyone that reports are available, warrant list number nineteen. And then the tree advisory committee minutes for August have been approved. With that, then we have no other items on our agenda. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone, for your participation. Have a good day and stay safe.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff.
Thank you, staff.